Welcome to the Echo Essentials Podcast. My name is Chris Bukarski. On today's episode, we have friend of the show, former host of the show, Dave Dale is back and we have him in to talk a bit about all the stuff that was happening with City Hall and City Council lately regarding the motion to see potential punishment, I guess, the proper term, improper term regarding the mayor's expense and the Integrity Commissioner's report and findings regarding that whole process. It's something that we've been talking about and wanting to talk about for a while now, but it was good to kind of get Dave back in because I know he's been itching to chat about it, especially considering he published a word of the week column on, you know, through his own channels called Integrity, which outlines not just the lead up to the integrity report and the release of it, but the actual process and what happens afterwards. And we teased a little bit of what Dave's actually going to be releasing pretty soon, actually. So stay tuned for that. Dave, you gotta meet the deadlines now. You gotta get it done. But it's a great conversation. It was good catching up with Dave. We talked a bit about his potential foray into politics, maybe in the near future, what this means for municipal government and how people might look to seek or election or reelection for council. Will this have any impacts on the mayoral race in the future? Was the punishment enough? All those kinds of things. We get into a really pretty lengthy conversation, so we can't wait for you to listen or watch it. Before we get to all that stuff, though, we want to throw in and thank our title sponsor of the show today, Source for Sports.
It's almost that time of year, early mornings at the rink, fresh notebooks and backpacks, and a community gearing up for another great season of varsity sports. At Source for Sports North Bay, we're proud to be part of it all. Whether it's finding your kid's first pair of skates, gearing up for tryouts, or outfitting your team for the season ahead, we've got you covered. Because here, we're not just a sports store, we're neighbors, coaches, teammates, and fans. And we're proud to cheer you on every shift, step, and stride of the way. Visit Source for Sports North Bay at 1321 Fisher Street and let us help you along your way.
Today, I'm not alone. I'm joined by a friend of the show. Welcome back, Mr. Dave Dale.
Dave, great to be here.
Welcome back, my friend.
Right on.
I would say it's a long time no see, but every time I see you, I feel like, you know, I am like, ah, he's back again. Here we are. But it's good to see you, man. We haven't seen you since, how was it, like, the end of July, early August?
Yep.
Yeah. So before we get to our topic, which we're gonna talk a bit about, and we've flirted with the idea for a while, you and I on the show, and even after the fact, how you been, man? Like, what's going on? Tell your listeners or tell our listeners and your readers, what's going on?
Well, I have a number of different projects to go. I'm just heading into my 20th magazine for the coming up this December.
Congratulations, by the way.
Yeah, nice anniversary. It was a little bit difficult getting the fallout without the Canada Post, so it kind of wore me out a little bit. But it has its positives. It showed that a lot of people cared and a bunch of people volunteered and helped out. So that was good. October was trying to get ready before snow comes, so I did a bunch of work at the house. I'm trying to do some videos I have for clients, and I'm getting a little bit better at moving those stones up the hill. But other than that, I'm just trying to, you know, take things. I've been watching the council a little bit more closely now that I'm thinking about running and, you know, and I'm pretty sure I'm gonna run next year based on what I see.
Very good segue, Dave Dale. I'm glad you're happy. I'm glad you're well, because the topic of today, we are gonna talk about City Council. We're gonna talk about their decision. We're gonna talk a bit about the saga and the drama and, you know, some of your opinions and some of the public backlash.
You read my column on it.
Of course. So the thing that brought this to my attention more than anything was like, we should talk about this. And we invited various different members of the community, mostly journalists, into talk. And for whatever reason, they haven't been able to commit, and that's fine. Obviously, I was like, Dave Dale will never say no to my lovely face. But let's get you in, because this piece that you wrote before, which is about a week ago, is your word of the week, your first word of the week, if I recall, titled Integrity, published on October 29. And it was following the publishing of the report, but before the council made a decision on what to do regarding the reprimand or punishment regarding Mayor Chirico's expenses and what happened afterwards. So can you tell me a bit about how you wrote this piece before we get into the actual nuggets of it all? Because I feel like you had a lot to say in here. And it's a really good read for those who haven't read it yet. Go read it.
The Small Town Times.ca.
There you go. Good plug. So tell me about what the Integrity piece meant before, you know, you knew about the decision, and now that we know it, does it change?
My opinion hasn't changed at all. And actually, I thought council landed in a decent enough spot. I actually recommended a 90 days without pay, because, well, to the chagrin of Councillor Sarah Inch, she was punished 90 days without pay. And I thought that this was worth that or more, right? So.
Fair.
Three different code of conduct violations significant, not necessarily in some people's minds, because they kind of write off the whole idea of battalion tickets and golf. They think the mayor should have some type of latitude in that. Not the way he went about it. And that was the code of conduct breaches there. But there is one really solid example of what it looks like. And this is what the Integrity Commissioner wrote, was that there were three meals that were charged that Peter had the responsibility of labeling properly, and they were labeled business meetings, meetings, but they were with family members. And there was no, nothing to defend those being labeled as meetings, right? And it's a small example, maybe, for about 200 bucks of three meals, but it is an example of somebody not being accurate and misleading, actually, on their expense claim, right? And that is a solid breach, which I know others that were pushing for 90 days or more and thinking there was more, actually. This would be what you would call smoke, and there might be fire. And so that's why you see someone like Jamie Lowry and Sarah Inch suggesting that the fact that the mayor actually had lots of experience with the city is both a deputy mayor, budget chief, and at one time, short-lived director of one of their operations. He, they feel he should have known better, and that means it's even worse. You can debate that. But also, I saw Jamie saying, well, if that's, there seems to be a lot going on here. Has anybody audited the actual mileage claims and to see if those match up?
Like, for his car?
Yeah, for when he was charging mileage before. See, the whole thing is that, the way it reads is that the mayor, who was approved for an annual car allowance, which was about 3,000 more than previously it was allowed, so up to about 7,500.
That's a lot.
Right? From 4,000 something. So after that was approved, there was a delay in him getting it, right? There was like a six months delay before he was gonna get it. And that's when he was doing the most of the charging for personal stuff with the understanding in his mind and others that, okay, that's because you owe me money and the mileage and the car allowance will pay for it.
Right.
So he was, he was sort of using it as a tab, right?
Because it kind of read like that.
Yeah, well, that's what he was doing.
I didn't fully understand that. If I can just, you know, take it back for a second, is that like, it felt like someone was almost like, almost in lieu of something that hasn't been charged yet or given back to him yet, which I thought was odd?
Yeah, he felt he was owed the money. And so what's the big deal? Use the credit card on personal stuff. It's easier, faster, convenient. Who knows what reasons he was using? But it seemed like he was like, well, if you'd pay me, I wouldn't be doing this.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's sloppy management of expenses. And that's what the Integrity Commissioner said.
And I'll peel through your piece, your think piece, because you did outline near the end, if I can quote you, you said, what's it say here? Quote, "It's all sloppy and sully's the reputation of everyone in the city," or "everyone in the city." But Chirico's quote that he did, quote, "did nothing wrong," Quinn quote, "whilst under the false meal expense breach." So that's what we're kind of talking about, is that like, it feels like it, it just feels messy, right?
It was, it was messy way to handle a financial situation for a corporation that size, very messy. You wouldn't do that even, you wouldn't want to do that for a small business necessarily, right?
You'd hope not.
And it tarnished everybody, the North Bay's brand. This whole thing tarnished North Bay, seriously. And that meal expense is the real example of that, yeah, you did do something wrong. That was wrong. You took, you took family members out to lunch and dinner and claimed it was business and meeting. Pretty clear.
It's pretty clear cut to me.
That is at least one thing wrong. Now, it's also wrong to feel entitled to have your battalion ticks paid for when you order them in June, and you don't pay for them when it's due, and you wait until you get the corporate credit. That's wrong. Yeah, that's wrong.
And you're gambling on being elected.
What he should have done in that case is say, "Council, I think I should be allowed to do this. It hasn't been done by anybody before, but I think my, my battalion tickets and golf is good business for the city, and I'd like you to cover it, and I want that approved."
Because like, we've talked about on the show before, I can somewhat blur the lines and understand how there can be business and, you know, posturing at public events, especially like with the battalion or charity golf tournaments. I do understand that.
The mayor's office has a set budget, and it's almost like 200 grand. So.
Damn.
But when you go to do that type of stuff, like the Integrity Commissioner said, right?
Yeah.
There was no evidence that he was tying what he was doing to actual business. And that brings us, later, we'll talk about that lobbying recommendation.
Yeah.
Having a lobby list, lobbyist's list. That's very important, because at least that's a topic where the city can improve how it does things, if they're gonna give a mayor a budget where he can make these decisions.
Right. So getting back to the integrity word, you talk about how, you know, use another word, tarnished or sully.
Sully.
You know, at what point does the city regain its integrity as an image perspective? Like, how long will it take? If it could take a certain amount of time, what can the city do? Primarily, City Council, or the things that the city can do for its people and those who do business in the city to, you know, improve that image? Is there anything that can be done? Because like, again, we're going over the data here, in case we haven't actually listed exactly how much. Mayor Chirico was, I guess he received a 60 days without pay suspension, the 6-4 decision at council. That's what happened, right?
60 day pay suspension.
60 day pay suspension. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, he's still working. Yeah, let's make that very clear. And so when you wrote in your piece, the 90 day would have reflected what may have cost the actual Integrity Commissioner's report, but now it's obviously less because it's 60.
Yeah, he gets about seven grand a month.
Yeah.
So two grand, two months is 14 grand, and three would be 21. And it's gonna be more like, oh, in the lower twenties, but yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully.
So at this point, like, you would think the saga is over. I mean, who knows? I mean, this is all feels like pre.
I can answer your question, though.
Oh, please do.
How we can regain our integrity.
Yeah, how?
And credibility?
Yeah.
Well, one, you need a real apology for the wrong that you did. So, and that's not just for him, that's for the city. That's the first step, is that the leadership actually recognizes that it tarnished its brand, or its brand was tarnished, and the person responsible, who the buck stops at, needs to apologize for that damage. And I think he kind of did in his thing, but he hasn't really said, you know what? I said I didn't do anything wrong. It looks like I did. I did a little bit wrong, and more than wrong. I didn't think it was wrong at the time, but it's wrong.
Do you think that would go, you know, a wild way, like a good way to like, you know, bridging that gap or mending that wound?
It's the first step. It's the first step. I don't know how you, well, it's much longer. If you don't take the first step, I don't know how you get to where you want to go.
Fair. Well, I guess, I guess the contrarian opinion would be like, well, is there a reason to apologize? Because he's already taken, you know, the lump on the chin. I'm not saying this particularly, but like, would others be like, well, if he says that, would he be backtracking? Would it be an admission of further guilt? Like, I guess there'd be a lot of that part of this conversation, I guess, but like.
Yeah, he should backtrack and admit further guilt.
That's what you're saying.
Well, the Integrity Commissioner said he's guilty of breaching the code.
Yeah. So.
And, yeah.
Yeah. Were you shocked that they didn't give him 90 days?
No, no, because I knew how fervently the, the no reprimand, zero days side was. It's like, they're, they're standing behind him like, Chris Main, Councillor Chris Main, was absolutely wrong when he said he did nothing wrong. He doesn't deserve anything, right? Yeah, you're skipping over that one, one thing he did wrong, for sure. Gary, Gary is a principled guy, and he's standing on this principle, but I think it's an error in judgment, because he was elected by the city to protect the city and to stand up for the city. And instead, he stood for the mayor instead of the city, I think, my opinion. We're all louder opinions.
You are.
I think the mayor needs also to take responsibility a little bit. Like, I know it's really tough when you got Jamie Lowry, Mark King, Sarah Inch, and Tanya Vray Bosch, all sort of lone wolves, kind of, in their own sort of way, trying to exert their perspective, which is fine. But what we have here is a split council. And if it wasn't for Maggie, the deputy mayor, breaking that tie on the vote, it could have been disastrous as far as the reaction and loss of, further loss of confidence in council, if there was no significant punishment.
Right.
So she, she saved the day there, I think, because that negotiation was gonna go down to.
Do you really think it would have gone down to zero days?
Well, no. Well, Mac and Gary indicated they were willing to go up to 30. So they were, they were bending a little bit, too, because they saw where it was going.
They were starting at zero, ending at 30. Obviously, it ended at 60, coming down from 90. But like, I just, I don't, I don't, maybe, maybe I'm an optimist, Dave Dale. When, I just, regardless of your personal feelings of Peter, and if you have a relationship with him, you know, and like, everyone has a very unique relationship with certain councillors or the mayor, taking that, all that aside, like, I just don't understand how you can look at this objectively, not even personally, not with any kind of ire, and just think like, by the, you know, the laws of the land, so to speak, you know, aside from, you know, societal justice in the court of public opinion, how you don't walk away with some sort of punishment or reprimand here, even if it's in the form of docked pay. I just don't see it, because it would send a really weird message to the voters and those who have supported councillors who would vote against it. Like you said, you know, you said he's a principal band, Gary. It just, it kind of gives a weird impression, because I understand what Gary was trying to say, that like, people around Peter and Peter himself went through a lot of scrutiny in the public eye. I mean, that's, I mean, it's unfortunate that it happened this way. I mean, you could argue that, like, I can't speak to the content specifically, but like, criticism is valid, right? That's, has a right to be there. But that isn't, shouldn't be in place of, you know, punishment or, you know, proper due diligence. Because like, there can be both, right? Like, don't you, would you agree? Would you disagree?
No, I agree with that. You can't really take into account the person's embarrassment and regret on something. It's not measurable, and it's not tangible, right? And then, and there needs to be a signal of some sort that they're taking it serious. If they hadn't done any type of pay suspension, well, then what would we have? We would have had a mayor who triggered and requested an Integrity Commissioner inquiry to clear his name. It didn't clear his name, and we got to pay for that, too. And he doesn't get punished, right?
Yeah. It was funny, because when, when we're talking about this, I can imagine you being like, can you imagine, Chris, that if they settle on somehow like, zero days or the minimum days, while also still kind of saying, you know, the media frenzy has been, you know, wild about this whole topic? If they would have done that, it would have kind of unironically amplified that frenzy to a different kind of level. Because at this point, you know, you know, the fury of the beast, so to speak, for lack of a better phrase, the people in the public who wanted to see harsh punishments for Peter, wouldn't have been satisfied. It would have been like, well, look, nothing happened. No, no justice was served, for lack of a better phrase. It felt like at certain point, even if you were on like Peter's court, like, you had to find a principal in the middle to be like, well, if we want to really, you know, quell this frenzy and take some heat off of everyone, and try to do the right thing while still respecting the person, you settle on something. I don't, I can't imagine how you'd ever settle on zero. I just, I can't imagine that it wasn't a possibility, because it never got to that point. But I would have been, my eyes have been rolling into the back of my head if that ever got to that point. I think others would have been probably feeling the same.
I had an extensive debate with a business friend of mine, business owner, and he was saying that, you know, I wouldn't have punished him. No, he shouldn't get a punishment. He punished, you know, he already, he already wearing what he did. There's no need for that. We need, we need to move forward. Forget it. Let's go. He paid it back. He's one of those. I said, okay, so one of your employees submits an expense claim, and he says he was doing business on Friday, but he wasn't. He was taking his wife and brothers out for dinner or something. That's okay. You want to pay for that. But he, now you have an employee that you just figured out that isn't 100% following the rules, right?
The target of the line.
Expense rules, right? That's okay with you? He says, well, I wouldn't throw him out with bathwater, basically. He says, I would have to watch him closer. I said, okay, fair. That's how you deal with it. Okay, well, what if now what he did becomes public, and it ruins your brand, and nobody wants to do business with you anymore, because they can't trust you, and they're not sure, and you don't have credibility anymore, and the thing you worked to build for 100 years gets a black eye? Are you still gonna ignore that? No, I'd fire him right away.
Right. So. And, and there were people calling, and I say all this, I mean, like, my, my limited relationship with Peter has always been friendly. It's been very like, you know, warm and, and just very, you know, whatever. But like, I just, people were also calling for him to step down. I think at a certain point, it may have changed the dialogue if he would have done that. He's obviously still on office.
Would have saved us $23,000.
It could have saved some cash. But my question here is that, like, you know, removing the person from this, I mean, you can apply, it doesn't matter.
And actually, this thing costs $100,000.
You say $100,000?
If you add up all the time that each councillor and staff person spent being interviewed, talking about it, not being able to get things done, not being able to do the work they need to do.
Like slowdown in general.
Well, morale's at an all time low, right? So this at least costs $100,000 in spinoff losses, because it's a distraction from what we're doing, a big disappointment for people trying to celebrate the 100th anniversary. Huge. I was just talking to somebody yesterday. They're like, we're trying to be proud of the city, but it's been tough this year.
Yeah, it's fair. It's hard to celebrate when the biggest story of the year is a City Hall scandal, right? But I actually do ask you, if, if, do you think in the eye of the media frenzy, or whatever we're gonna choose to call it, you know, the comment section?
The media doing their job.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, the media, no, that's fine. I have nothing with that. But I meant like, the people who are like, calling for, like, you know, a lot more, right? Or like, I use the joke, I joke with the term bloodletting, that's not the right word, but like, who are being, you know, vengeful, right? Who are looking for not just justice, but like, like vengeance, almost, right? Like, at what point do you think they would have been quelled? Do you think they are quelled currently? Do you think it's enough? Do you think it's gonna change anything? Like, are people gonna let us go?
Well.
Now that the punishment's been given?
Not until the next election, because they've lost confidence in this council.
Fair.
Right? I wrote a column about that before this one. It's basically said, "Has this council still have enough credibility to make big decisions that people can back them on?" Unfortunately, what, this is what I think people want out of their council. They want to be confident that they're actually getting banged for their taxes, that there's a financial accountability, and there's accountability to what they promised before an election. There's accountability of what they do while they're serving, and you don't necessarily have to wait every four years for that accountability. They want to know their money's being well spent.
Right.
Well, it's not being well spent right now, right? So, and, and like, there's still thoughts, is Peter running next time? Is he gonna go for it again? Who's gonna run against him? Is Jamie Lowry gonna, like, what's going on?
I think we all know what Jamie's gonna do.
No, actually, I don't think we do.
You don't, you don't believe what he said in the Bay Today article?
Well, he said he's considering running mayor, and he's considering, if he was elected mayor, that he would use those mayoral powers to push forward things and not be hampered by a council of elected people.
Can we just talk about that briefly? It feels kind of weird that you'd kind of besmirch council while you're part of it. And then eventually, if you want to become mayor, but also criticizing council, when part of that job is the power of council can help move forward things that the mayor and the other councillors can do? Does that seem kind of weird to you?
Well, yeah, because, well, to me, it's weird, because I'm more of a centrist trying to, let's find a way to make work. Like, what's our achievable? Where we're going? And what's it gonna take to get there? Now, Jamie's experience on council is because he didn't, didn't get along with the mayor, and he was frozen out, and nothing can get done, and he felt like he was wasted, wasted air, right? Waste of time, waste of effort. For him to basically say that, yeah, I don't care who gets elected to council next time, because they're all gonna feel that way, I'm just gonna run the whole thing by myself.
Felt a little weird.
Right? So I, I think it would be like getting a Peter light.
I think so.
Well, maybe a Peter heavy, because he's got, he's got a track record of, I don't know if he wants to stand on that in a mayoral race. I'm not sure. I don't think so, actually. The situation between Castle Home and, and Castle Arms has, hasn't unwound, right? And that's a huge thing, if you're really looking into how that's all transpiring and who's on which team, right? You got the Chair of the Chamber, who's the Chair of Castle Home, who's a good friend of the mayor, who is, like it or not, a good friend of the MPP, and the MPP's not impressed with what happened at Castle Home, and.
He said his remarks.
Yeah, right? And he's not impressed with what he saw.
Oh, at City Hall, he definitely gave his remarks with that.
Yeah, but like, there's a whole battle going on there that a lot of people don't understand. You got Larry Fold, who's Chair of Castle Arms, and, and he's a piece of this puzzle in the, in the council situation as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, for sure.
And, and he said a lot of things online that are provocative.
Vitriolic, I was gonna say.
Well, there's other words, too, right? So I think people are tired of these games of power control and, and zero sum politics, where you're either with me or you're without me, or you're against me. It would be nice to see a council and a mayor work together. That's all I got to say.
I agree, Dave. You know, I agree. I, you know, when it come a time, October 2026, we'll see you talk about that, I'm sure. You know, if, if you decide, and we are so fortunate. But it's just, I just, I was talking about this last time I think we talked. I was like, I just want my, I don't need my councillors in my city people to get along. You just, just get stuff done, like, like.
Do the job. Work at it.
Yeah.
Like this, this shutdown in below the south of the border.
The states?
Well, this is a good way, this is what happens when you have the split where it's a zero sum game, right? People get hurt. Things don't get done, right?
People go hungry.
Right? Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I'm gonna be watching, we say this story as like, reaches quote unquote conclusion. I mean, we've been given so many different curveballs, like, I don't know if I can say that with, with absolute certainty. I think the second, the, the final nail in the coffin will be like, how the next election goes. Because people are talking about who's gonna run. Some people have very clearly said they are not running. Some people, as we mentioned before, have clearly said they are going to run, maybe for a certain position. I'm keen to see how many of them come back, and I'm keen to see, and this is like, kind of like a call to action.
There's gonna be six chairs open in the next election.
If not more.
Only thing, I only think there's gonna be four return.
But my, my thing is, I'm keen to see, and I'm not saying it necessarily has to equate to this, because like, I'm not running, so I have the dogs in this fight. I will be voting and watching carefully. But those who have been watching this and have been criticizing parts of council or all of council for something or another. But those who have been watching this and have been criticizing parts of council or all of council for something or another, will they step up and be like, well, okay, well, like, if I want to see the change, why can't I be it? Right? We talked a bit about like, you know, your potential interest in, you know, having a seat at council. Do you think others will put their name forth? Do you think this will spark change?
Well, it's fueling some people. I've talked to a bunch that are thinking about running.
Yeah.
And they're pretty serious and they're good people and they have good intentions. So, and if you want to, all sides, all places of the spectrum, really, as far as, uh, what they believe in, as far as what governance should do municipally. There's, there's people that they, at the moment, they're thinking it needs to be burned down, start from scratch, right? I think once you, there, I think that's wasteful myself. I think you work with what you got and you try to improve and you, and you coach from the bottom of the bench and you just sort of, you, you look for that, uh, those wins. And, and you try to sort of start building on them, right? I like the small ball approach to, uh, you know, competitiveness and developing teams like the Jays. Hey, we had a good season.
It was good. We, we talked a bit about that a little bit with, um, at the end of our episode with Anthony Roda last week, where it felt really optimistic. Actually, no, at that point in time, that last episode, I don't remember anymore, but it was right after their 18 inning game. And I was like, Anthony, I stayed up all, all day or all night for this. It felt like all day. Uh, I'm exhausted. Uh, and then they, they went forward and like, that was a whole different level of pain, watching that game seven.
It was like a federal election.
Oh, it was, some people, it was much worse. But it did come down to it and there was a lot of like, a lot of things that were happening. But I think this is going to be a very interesting inning, you know, quote unquote, as we get towards the ninth inning, which would be, I'm assuming the next election to start the new game. Because if people put forth, if people back out, if people have very unique platforms which they want to run on, post all of this. I think there's a lot of things that people, potential city councillors who are looking at running.
Can you think it's too early for me to post, uh, basically an outline of, uh, my opinions on certain topics? Like, is it too early in, like a?
For, for me, for us?
No, for me.
Oh, I have no idea.
Well, you, you say you don't have a dog in this fight, but you actually do because you're taxpayer.
Oh, I meant like, I don't have a literal, I'm not the dog in the fight. I have dogs in the fight, but I'm not the dog.
Yeah. Well, you should be a dog. You should like, you don't have to be in council to have it, to be part of the process.
Of course not. Yeah. But you said you wanted to share a couple of different, you know, platform ideas?
Well, my, my question was, is like, is this too early in the game for me to, to start, uh, outlining what's important to me and what I hope to bring?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm not your campaign advisor yet. Hello, Dave.
Everybody is.
But like, I think if you want to have old receipts and you want to stand on them and they're like firms or beliefs that you hold firmly, then like, you can stand on it now or you can stand on it in a year. If they don't change, then that's the stronger to you, right? That's your own credibility. Is there one thing that you want to see at the next council with or without you on it, that you believe should be something that they should hold dear?
I want the, um, the responsibilities of councillors to be rationalized a little bit better and that every councillor, uh, feels like they're in the game. So I want to change a bit of the culture, like, and in chamber where, um, they, um, they're, that just because you don't agree with the mayor, that you, you have a role to play and you have a, a purpose and you, you feel fulfilled and your duties and that you're not shut out. So how that happens, I'm not sure. But that's one of the key things is to have a fully engaged council where everybody feels like they have, uh, something that they can contribute. Like the Blue Jays, right? You have a deep bench. We need a deep bench. So whatever that is, uh, and how that's, like, I'm trying to think of how that could be done. Uh, whatever they did in the past doesn't work, I, obviously, right?
Yeah.
So.
Not recently.
That's one thing I'd like to do is change the, uh, the taxpayers' perception on, uh, on whether or not the council is doing their job by changing how the council is, councillors are engaged in the job and that shows more than just once every four years.
North Bay's turning 100 and what a time to be here. From the buzz of the heritage parade to sunset concerts at the waterfront, the city is alive with celebration. And you know who's right in the middle of it all? Homewood Suites by Hilton North Bay. We're proud to be a part of this milestone moment. Whether you're coming home from a family reunion, planning a gathering with friends, or just simply making the most of everything the Centennial has to offer. Our doors are open. Stay in a spacious suite that feels like home with a full kitchen to cook in, room to relax, and a space to unwind after a full day of fun. Are you hosting something bigger? Our event spaces and amazing local partners like the Grand and Stock Transportation make it easy to bring people together. Best of all, they're just steps from the action. The fireworks, the food trucks, the music, the laughter, it's all right here. Celebrate 100 years of North Bay with us. Use code CENTENNIAL to save on your stay anytime this year. Be at home with Homewood Suites by Hilton North Bay. Join the party today at 495 Oak Street West or give us a call at 705-495-3000.
I'd imagine City Hall in general could use a bit of a pick me up in terms of morale, in terms of culture. Cause you mentioned earlier, it feels like the vibes are kind of low. Cause you would think it should be a point of pride and I'm sure it is still for many. But I'm sure it maybe has taken a bit of a hit lately and I'm speaking from no perspective of, other than just speculation. But like, I'd imagine like, it must be tough working down there right now. Like, it's gotta be tough in terms of like.
They're gonna have a job trying to convince some people not to retire early.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and they're gonna have a job, a tough time recruiting people if, uh, people don't feel like the organization is something that, uh, has some stability. And, uh, the threats of, uh, that, uh, some people have of cleaning house and changing things and, uh, you can, you can implement change without, without, uh, mass destruction, right? You can. I know you can. Um, and I think, uh, the more you talk about it being a, a big war zone and that everybody's corrupt and that, uh, you can't trust anybody in the city, you know what he's doing to work, talking like that is, uh, is wrong for one thing. Cause the city actually functions not terribly when compared to some others. We just have to have a, uh, an approach of, of, uh, evaluating each department so that we can show the, how good it is. They all have problems and they can all be fixed. It's, it's like, you work with what you got and you build it up. Otherwise, you're reinventing the wheel.
It almost feels pessimistic if you, if you do the whole thing to be broken and it's not worth saving or people, uh.
That kind of talk will get you elected, but it's not gonna help once you do.
Is it gonna keep people liked? I mean, at a certain point, if you only deal in fire, everyone's gonna get burned. Like, you can't.
Well, when you, when you get elected on the fire, you have to keep people fired up. And that's what we're seeing down south of the border. You gotta keep feeding that beast. If you're gonna, if you're gonna feed that wolf, you gotta keep feeding that wolf and that's the only thing you gotta do. So if you come into it like that and you don't have constructive, uh, work together attitude, um, you're gonna lose people.
But doesn't it feel kind of weird that like, you know, if, if you, if you campaign, so to speak, on, you know, uh, not like accountability in like, uh, in an earnest way, but like in an aggressive, like fire hose way. And like you're approaching like, everything is broken and I can fix it. Uh, you know, similar to what's happening down south. And then you get there. Or if you get something higher and then you don't change it, well, I mean, like, you know, what's the point, right? Like, I feel like you can only be a firebrand for as long as it'll keep your base happy. And like, it sounds ridiculous having this in North Bay, but like, it's, it's happening, obviously, because people are passionate about this topic in particular. But it's not just this is topic, right? There's people who are concerned about what's happening at Tret Lake. There's people who are concerned about what's happening with PFAS. There's people who are concerned with what's happening with the Centennial. There's a lot of people who have various different parts that are like really fired up. But like, when people get elected, have you found that the fire is maintained or do you think that it's good to keep that fire? Do you think certain fires are gonna be good to keep? Like, cause I feel like as we approach election, we're gonna be hearing a lot of these kind of conversations happen, you know, in the public, in private. But who wants to run? What needs to change? But like, at a certain point, do you think a certain councillor is even able to do all the things that they want to do unless they have a fully onboard council to do it with?
Well, you're not never gonna be able to do everything you, you want to do, right? So if, but if one of the things you want to do is to get as much done as you can and work with others to get their things done if they're good, right? You could, you could trade support, like there is a game there, but, um, you're not gonna get everything you want done in the first four years. You're, you're not gonna get it all done if you don't work with other people, right? It's just not gonna happen. Um, and, uh, you have to understand it, it is, there's a long game here. You'll think about it. City's 100 years, right? And, uh, there's gonna be another 100 years, but you gotta make these incremental improvements. So if I had a slogan, it would be, we can do better.
I like that. I like that. Put that on record, yeah.
We can do better. And let's do better together, right? And I'm not just saying that because it's, it sounds good.
Does sound good.
That's about the only way you can go about things and have lasting change, right?
So, yeah, I think it'll be interesting. Because like, at, at this point, council can want, can go, I think it can go in one to two different ways, right? And I'm not, maybe I'm just being, again, uh, making this needlessly like, you know, uh, two different paths, but like, you can go in that approach where you want to work with people despite, you know, political or ideological differences. Or you can stay so on your own brand, you know, where, you know, whether you have champion things that you want to, you know, drive home, but you don't work with anyone else on anything else and you either get everything done or you get nothing done. I just don't know if, if I'm speaking honestly, that's the way you can get stuff done. Because in an ideal world where you have a whole council who agrees with you, which, whether it's good or worse, um, you're not gonna get anything done because if you're gonna be so firm on certain things that you won't bend. Like, what's the point if you're not gonna get anything done at all, right? Does that feel kind of like almost backwards? If you won't, like, you almost have to have that approach of like, you have to work with people. We've gotten to a place where if they haven't, if they don't want to work together or they are so two sided, it should be like topic situated, not sided situated, right? Shouldn't that be the way it works? Maybe I'm just being naive, but like, that's, it's not just make more sense to kind of work amongst those who you have to get stuff done with?
I got an example and I mentioned it before, but it's, it's, uh, it came up in a conversation with a constituent.
Look at you, look at you politician.
Is somebody that said, uh, I hope you don't have that stupid ward system idea in your head.
This is your, this is your axe to grind, my friend.
But it's a good example of what I'm talking about. Okay, so I don't want to implement a ward system necessarily. I want to solve the problem that people are frustrated with. The problem is, is that they don't feel that their end of town is being well represented and they don't feel like they're part of, uh, a community. Okay, so we need to have a better sense of community. How do you do that? Well, uh, you can act like you have the ward system and, and create a, uh, a conduit of town halls that go into the various ward type areas and move around specifically to represent those areas, rather than a town hall in West Ferris, but it's for everybody. I'll have one for West Ferris people, but West Ferris issues. And then, uh, strike a couple of committees from each of these places and let them be the conduit to a representative on council that they can call first about their neighborhood and act like it's a ward. Solve the issue by creating that community, sense of community. And you, and whether or not it leads to, oh, you know, this is a good way to elect representatives too. Maybe we can come up with a hybrid example of a ward system that would work in this small city. And then put it to a plebiscite. But do it in stages and, and, but first you gotta solve the issue is where, and the issue is, people don't feel like they're part of the community. Well, you start in the neighborhoods you live in.
Little segue here, Dave.
All right.
What neighborhood would you live in? Cause, correct me if I'm wrong, but you are not currently a living residing resident of the city of North Bay.
I have a bit of a plan for that.
I was gonna say, like, you are a staunch East Ferrisian or Corbillian.
Well, I've lived in Corbill for 23 years.
Yeah.
I enjoy my space, uh, and the lack of neighbors out there. I, I lived on Rancier in, in, uh, in Graniteville for six years.
Yep.
96 to 2002. I will, uh, qualify as a non-resident to run in the election because I'll have a lease in my name for, uh, either an office space or an apartment in North Bay.
Right.
I just renewed my mortgage for my house, so I have another four years before there's a penalty. But I do plan on, uh, selling my house in six, when I'm 65. And.
Four and a half years, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, and then I'll be living in the city. But also, if I find the right place, I'd like to live, actually, um, have a, you know, some type of bachelor apartment before then. I'm trying to get a, a housemate to cover some bills out in Corbill, so while I'm doing this.
Right.
But if I can find the right place for a bachelor pad, uh, I'd like to be in, uh, the downtown.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's one of the priority issues people are concerned about. I understand it a little bit and that's going to be the big project for the next four years, really. So it's close to the city hall, uh, it's close to, uh, where a lot of the work's done. And I, and thinking of, well, I'll have a, an office at 176 in West Ferris as well, because I, I enjoy them and their, their culture there. And, uh, I want to use their facilities for meetings and other things.
Okay.
So I have a plan to reintegrate into the city. I just can't afford the city right now.
It's fair.
So that's another campaign slogan is like, I'd love to live in North Bay. I can't afford it, but maybe after a little while I can.
There you go.
No, I have plans to move back in the city, but I'm gonna keep the house in Corbill, uh, at least until I'm 65.
Checks out. Cause like, you know, you don't need my help, Dave. But if I'm gonna lobby your help, you know, or if I'm gonna lobby myself to help you is like, I'm picturing this like in 11 months, you know, and you, and you put your name through the ring and people are like, well, Dave, you are, you know, you are a, a North Bay like critic and staple, but you don't live in North Bay. And we just have, you know, at this point, from our own, you know, history of working together. But prior to that, so many different times where we have criticized parachute candidates, not the same thing, but people or mayors who don't live in the city, working for the city. And so like, there's different parts where that's gonna probably come up, but like, you clearly have outlined a bit of a plan and you're gonna be ready to take that on as I'm assuming that's gonna be some sort of criticism for you in the future.
It's a legitimate, uh, perspective to question that, but when you're weighing somebody, whether or not they're a parachute or not, I think my, my work history in North Bay is, speaks for itself.
Extensive.
And, uh, my magazines about North Bay. I'm dedicated to North Bay. I'm not going anywhere out of this area. There's a good reasons why I went to East Ferris. It was partly to do with the taxes.
Yep.
So I understand, you know, the issue. I understand why people in North Bay would like, well, you don't pay, you don't have the pain that we have here, so you can't represent us. Well, actually, um, I think I can help. I have a skillset to help and I have a history in North Bay that actually, you know, goes back to 86 when I came here, right? So I think I've only not lived in the area for about two years out of the, since then.
Fair.
I, I think I can justify myself as a, um, a good stand-in for, uh, born and raised.
There you go. Well put. Can we talk about something that you mentioned earlier that we can come back to? I didn't write it down. I should have.
Lobby?
Yeah, you hopped up with the lobbying policy. Can you, can you detail with our, our listeners and our audience about what that is so we can get into it first?
Well, the Integrity Commissioner noted, noted that, uh, one of the issues he found in, in, in this inquiry because he was, you know, looking into, uh, the mayor's claims that, uh, golf and hockey were business oriented. He noted that, uh, and I was really impressed with his resume.
With whose resume?
The Integrity Commissioner.
Oh, uh, I'm gonna get his first name wrong. Guy or Guy Jorno?
Yeah.
Yeah, he worked for.
Well, he's, he's, he teaches and he, and he, uh, he's an expert on integrity and, uh, ethics, right? And one of the things that he recommended was, uh, a lobbyist list where we understand who is trying to talk to our, uh, elected officials about what.
Yeah.
Right? So if you're taking them golfing, it's officially recorded as this person representing this lobby and, and we're expending money to wine and dine them. So it can be tracked, right? I think the lobbyists should have to take out the mayor and the mayor shouldn't be taking out anybody.
I think it depends on the business, but I tend to agree with you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, there's, there's examples where you want to, uh, welcome somebody and, and make them feel like they're, they're well appreciated, but. Basically, the, the lobbyist list would actually make it official. And then the, the mayor and the Economic Development Office can have a budget for whatever they want to do with those lobbyists. And so as long as we know that there's who's. And so as long as we know that there's who's talking to who about what.
All right, because at the very least, what that can go about doing is creating more transparency and documented planning with regards to like what the plans are for what city hall and city council are looking at doing in terms of development within, you know, the area, right? I think that's a good idea. I think um, there's a lot of things in the integrity report that I found interesting. Um, I I feel like I've kind of, it's been a crazy week for me, you know, we'll talk about, you know, some of those things later, I'm sure. But like, you're right, like he had a really impressive background. Um, you know, I think he worked for the federal government at one point in time, uh, Guy himself. There are a couple of things where I was like, okay, like I can kind of maybe see where it came from on like, why this was not a violation, why it was violation. Was there any of those things that you found should have been or should have been violations regarding to the report?
Well, I think like other people may have seen a lot of those little things adding up to a lot of stuff. But on their own, each of them can be sort of rationalized, explained or considered not worthy of a full breach of code, code of conduct. But if you put them all together, they illustrate an issue where there was a uh, an expectation on the mayor's part. Perhaps could be described as entitlement that he didn't have to pay for what he used to pay for, what he, when he was trying to campaign and be or be part of the community. Example, um, Davidi Club membership, fifty bucks, small potatoes. But uh, why should we pay for it now when you paid for it before? And what about these other clubs? And why that one, right? Of course, right? Because you've been with it all your life. So that's, that's not mayor's business that we should pay for. Right? There's an example, right? So but there's a whole bunch of those little ones like, okay, so is the golf your business of campaigning for the next election? Or is it your entertainment? Or are you actually doing business for the city? So all of that, and what are some of the other examples of, there was the uh,
I don't have it printed in front of me. Um, you can maybe pull it up, but uh, just while you're spinning the wheels there, I'll just detail to the listeners that Guy detailed that the technical commissioner detailed that five and a half thousand of the seventeen thousand were um, classified or suggested as violation of the code of conduct.
Yeah.
And that five and a half thousand makes up the things we kind of talked about already and then some.
Mostly the battalion tickets uh, and the golf memberships.
And 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 food.
And two hundred dollars for meals, three meals.
So uh, and again, like it all goes to say that he did pay all that back. Um, but there was parts of the deal that were kind of like, you know, I'm waiting for this to come back into my favors. It kind of loo. Actually, the whole process was just messy. So like, even if it wasn't like a certain ruling or finding, uh, you talked about the whole, uh, and I'm doing circles here, Dave. The lobbying part being a suggestion or like a like a motion to to change. Do you find anything there that was kind of like a subtle nod or like a cue that it could be a recommended change for what we can do for council? Like, is there anything that you can pick apart in here that you could be like, okay, we can maybe learn from this and put this into policy like the lobbying kind of thing?
Well, what expenses constitute business for the mayor, right? So they have to have a real frank discussion about how much they want to fund and differentiate between um, what's good for the mayor and then what's good for the city, right? Um, and you know, uh, some people feel that the mayor is underpaid um, and he deserves perks. And we we need to have that position appear to be uh, one where someone enjoys the fruits of everybody else's labor. Or.
Or.
Or uh, you know, he's working for the city, right? And and that alone, right?
Yep. I mean, civil service inherently, um, it's kind of like it's serviced by nature, like you're working for the people. I mean, it has to pay the bills, obviously, because like it's a, especially now, a very high stress position. But I think you quote in your article uh, or in your letter, is it eighty-five thousand for the salary for for the mayor? Is that accurate?
That's what I read. Um, but if you add up some of the extra benefits and uh, um, payment from D SAB, I think it goes up from there. And since I heard somebody say it's over a hundred now, but like in total compensation.
Okay.
But I think it's at eighty, eighty-five.
Speaking of benefits, yeah, Ben, can you take a look?
North Bay Mayor's salary?
Yeah.
And then there's a, there's a payment and benefits and pay in lieu of benefits. And then there's, you know, there's a couple thousand for being on D SAB for your, those people, like about four or five, I think, if you go to all the meetings.
Ben?
Shows hundred and two thousand, just over hundred and two thousand.
And what's your, what's your site? What's your quote on that?
The Nugget.
Okay.
So yeah, hundred and two in salary and fringe benefits, but I don't think it says anything about what that is.
Okay, so.
Hundred and two and fringe benefits?
That's.
Dave is spitting in his head right now.
Yeah, well, uh, it's something we can check out, but.
Yeah, we can footnote that.
At one point it was eighty-five.
Okay.
Uh, it's uh, so this is the other piece. This is from twenty twenty-five. Uh, the office in the mayor's budget was two hundred and thirty K. However, expenses including his salary came in at a hundred and thirty-three.
Wow.
So that's, yeah, including expenses and stuff, so.
So that'd be the uh.
Running for mayor, Dave?
Well, you know.
I'm just kidding.
Like, like anybody talking about running for council, the people go, why don't you just run for mayor? And they go, it's an extra fifty year, sixty year, it's an extra seventy. I'm like, an extra sixty, seventy for the hardest, that's the hardest fifth, sixty, seventy year I'll ever earn. Especially if you're not really inclined for kissing babies and cutting ribbons, man, right?
I would pay to see the day where you cut a ribbon for something at city hall and have to kiss a baby. That would be an article I will write and I will submit to the letter to the editor for Bay Today or whoever. If that comes to a point where it's a brand new world first. But.
Kick me in the shins if you ever see me do that.
Okay. Well, I mean, like, because I just don't want any of this, I'm not lobbying, speaking of lobbying, um, you know, for for people who put forth their hat and to to do the service to not be paid. I think it's a hard job. And I think it's a thankless job because I think no matter what you do and what you don't do, you're probably going to get criticized and crapped on for it. Because that's the nature of public service. But do you think, you know, whether the costs or the the costs, um, the salary of the mayor or those who work on council? Now knowing all this, or at least part of this, and knowing the saga of this, I'm I'm just so curious about the the next election, if it's going to deter or, you know, uh, motivate those to 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 run. Cause like, I just, I mean, I know a couple of people on council personally, um, but like, I I don't know them super, super well. I was really keen to read that piece that was in Bay Today, speaking of which, uh, where they kind of detailed like a temperature check on like, are you going to run again? And some people had no comments, people said no, people said yes. I'm just, I'm curious, because like, I feel like I keep coming back to it, Dave, but this is going to have significant effects on the election for municipal, like for city council in a year. We're a year out from it, but it's going to have, like, the whole dressing for the table is basically ready for that. And we're a year out. So we talk about posturing for a year and talking about things that you can do in policy. I don't think it's early because I think it's happening now. People are talking about it already. Right? And people need to know, you know, will my, well, should I consider? Well, the people will be volunteering who I would ally or rally behind. It's not too early, I don't think. I think it's early enough.
I think the earlier the people that have um, considerable um, skill sets to offer and are have at least a little bit of um, proof that they've been involved with the community and and uh, name recognition. I think it might be important for a number of the people I've talked to to uh, come forward and say that they're considering it, because the more it looks like there's legitimate uh, concerned candidates with something to offer. The more that uh, come forward and the sooner they do, the better it is for others that are considering it, because then they can envision that they're not going to be on a team uh, that's actually going to try to do something.
Yeah.
With or without whoever's mayor.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
There's lots of people with a bone to pick that think about running for mayor and you start talking about it. But when you really start looking at the impacts to your family, your time and your commitment for four years, um, a lot of those people, if they only have the one or two issues that bother them, they'll find a way of rationalizing their way out of it. But if people uh, if good, if people with some skill set to offer and a proof that they have a commitment to the community, start talking about running and start planning for it, I think you're going to get more um, decent candidates.
Fair. I'm curious. I mean, David, on all of your catacombs of history, has there been a time when only one person has ran for mayor? Has it happened? We can look this up again, too, but like.
Not in North Bay.
No? There's always been a race?
There's always been a race in North Bay, even though some of them haven't been real races.
Right, exactly. There's one I could think about in particular.
I don't think we've acclaimed a mayor.
Yeah, I just wondered if this is going to deter people from running for mayor. I don't think people are going to deter from running for council, but I'm really curious.
Well, when they hear that the salary is up to a hundred and thirty and that they have superpowers can do whatever they want, we might have a bunch of people running for mayor.
Oh, my God, why don't we open this Pandora's box?
Well, that's the kind of thing, right? It's like the more that it seems like uh, you can actually put your own agenda and you don't need council. That's the flaw in the Doug Ford superpower, uh, you know, mayor's strong powers.
Strong mayor powers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's not leading in a good way. I think we as a community, and I'm talking about the royally.
The royally.
Yeah, um, should guard against.
Okay.
I don't think we want to have an oligarch.
Fair. I guess the people will decide that. I don't want to either. I don't, I don't want oligarchy either. I don't want to.
So here's a scenario that's a sort of a bad dream for me.
Okay, shoot.
I get elected to council.
You do.
I get elected.
Okay.
And uh, a mayor that wants to run the show on his own.
Or her own.
Or her own. Then I got to prove how important it is to have a vocal council. Unfortunately, uh, the other things that are in play is the integrity commissioner is getting beefed up powers by the province to rule on more and more specific things and have possibly more to say. Uh, and uh, if a council is trying to rein in their strong mayor, they may be in breach, depending on how they go about it, right? So then you're really going to need to be skilled in communications. And that's where I think I, either way, if it's a bad council, like a bad mayor, I, you're going to need strong communications. Um, if you want to get something done and work as a team, you're going to need strong communications and understand that you can talk about things in a certain way, even if there's confidentiality's. To a point.
Fair.
I think everybody's erring too much on the side of caution. We got to push the envelope and find out where those boundaries are.
Fair point, fair point. Dave, is there anything else on this saga? Or anything else that we talked about today, or we didn't talk about today, that you wanted to bring back or highlight?
Well, uh.
I know that look. What is it, Dave?
The people in this, in this community, the movers and the shakers, and the people with a lot at stake and the investors and whatnot need to sort of uh, find a way where we're not uh, what's the word? Doing this zero sum game where if uh, in the community, if you run afoul of somebody or you cross swords over in opinions or you, whatever transpires, that there's this frozen out situation where you're losing um, people who have something to contribute, but they can't because the uh, there's a gang mentality. Right? And there's people in different positions in the community that can enforce this gang mentality, which drives other people away from those organizations because they don't want to have to deal with that because they know it's there. So uh, I'm not saying that everybody's going to be able to ever join hands and sing kumbaya.
Kumbaya.
Yeah. But we got to stop being crabs in a bucket. Stop pulling down people just because they got a little bit ahead of you, or they, you're a different flavor politically. And now you can't work together because you pissed off my friend. Or my friend didn't like you, and so we're not going to do business or you're not going to get, right? We have to find a way where everybody feels that um, they can play and have an opinion and get over things. So stop holding the grudges from high school.
I I never would have thought of here Dave Dale taking up an optimist perspective on this. It's, it's, it's enriching, but like, I think you're right, Dave. Look at that. I agree with you. You're doing something. I think you're right, Dave, because I think it's easier said than done, because I haven't had to live, neither of us have had the lived experience of sitting on this council, right? And I can't speak to the inner dynamics and politics of each person, even though that comes with, I think, any kind of political position. But I think it serves the community if you can all just kind of get along. If you can kind of break down those silos, you can work together.
Things out.
Work things out.
Work things out. Like, I was actually just watching a podcast this morning, uh, and I believe it's um.
The Echo Central's podcast?
No, it wasn't. Actually, it was, it was an American podcast about American politics. And it was a Democratic Senator, I believe, Mansion.
Oh, yeah, uh, well, yeah, he, what was he doing? He's the guy who like always votes no on everything.
I think he was talking to John Stewart.
Maybe? I think, I think, I think I know the clip you're talking about. Um, is it Steve Mansion? No, Paul Mansion?
Mansion's the last.
Whoever, yeah.
But basically, he said he spent his career in the middle and he was coming out with a book. And he's basically, he was raised to get things done and to work with people to get things done on either side of the spectrum.
Wow.
And that, that is the approach that we need to to go after. It's like, you need to work together. You don't have to get along. You can disagree, but you got to get stuff done. If you're not getting stuff done, you're, you're, you're no use to anybody.
Yeah, I think the unique thing, not to attempt to deflate that really good moral message. I think, I think Mansion got in some hot water because I think he like halted a bill that I think at the time, it might have been a Supreme Court chair at the end of the Obama administration, I think. To a point at which at this point backfire because they they halted and waited, I think, I might be getting this wrong. But he was a House Democrat who kind of sat in the middle and kind of flipped depending on what he needed to do.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's his, his story. I haven't heard from him in a long time, but you're right. I've seen that clip on my algorithm somewhere, probably YouTube. Uh, where he's talking to some sort of talk show host.
Yeah, he might have made a mistake there that had big, big uh, impacts on the Supreme Court, right?
And. But he wasn't playing a party.
Pardon me?
He wasn't playing a party, right? I think that's the thing is that he's like, he's technically a registered Democrat, but like, he couldn't have been more independent if he tried.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, he, you know, sometimes, sometimes uh, you regret um, working for the, going about how you're doing. Sometimes you make a mistake.
Yeah, it's fine.
It's, it's learning from it and continuing the path. But if you're, if your intentions are good and and you're applying your skill set and uh, you don't give up, you don't quit. You can get stuff done.
I'm not a fortune teller, Dave, but if you had a second word of the day like uh, column after our conversation today, I would imagine it would be accountability.
Hey, it was.
It was?
Yeah.
No way, are you serious?
It's half written already. Accountability, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I nailed it.
Yeah.
I know your brain for better or worse.
I mentioned it earlier and it is an important part of it. The the constituents of North Bay, the the taxpayers need to uh, believe there uh, there's an accountability for the dollars that they invest in their community. And accountability for the people handling those and making those decisions. People want accountability.
Yeah.
And they want to get things done and they want to feel like, um, yeah, okay, um, my taxes are going to the right thing.
Fair. I like it. Accountability in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, hopefully twenty twenty-six, you know? As we track this entire, I say twenty twenty-four, like I wasn't covering stuff at that point, but you know, covering things that came down the pipe in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I I had no idea that was called. I, I, I had no idea that's what it was called, by the way. I, I, that was a, that was a shot in the dark.
Yeah, I wasn't going to post it until uh, after this
Did I spoil it?
Interview, no.
Did you spoil it?
No, uh, it's, it's not the word. It's how I use examples of what the word is probably going to be the interesting part. But um, uh, I wanted to find out, I didn't know exactly what we're going to talk about. So I, I wanted to make sure my column had some reflection of what we're talking about. When's this running, by the way?
Uh, this is dropping tomorrow, brother.
Oh, oh, okay. I better get at it tonight and finish my column.
Get to work, Dave. But uh, Dave, before I let you go, um, thanks for coming in. It's always good seeing you.
My pleasure.
Um, you know, I'm glad that Yes, please.
Echo Essentials is still up and running, uh, after I get elected to North Bay City Council. And I think every city councillor and, and department heads should access Echo Essentials as a, as a way to communicate to the people of North Bay because they need this type of thing. And you guys do, and I know, we created this for this. And uh, I want to be one of those councillors that actually get called in and uh, and do these things next year.
Well, you will always have an invite, but I'll never have to send it. Um, you will always probably have a, a welcome door in here. So long as you get on council, Dave. Uh, but again, my friend, it's a pleasure. We'll, we'll catch up soon and um, it's good to hear from you.
Thank you. It's good hearing from you, dude.
Thank you so much for listening or watching the Echo Essentials Podcast. My name is always Chris Makarsky. And thank you so much for listening. Let us know your thoughts. Drop us a like, share, subscribe if you can to all of our channels and platforms. Follow us wherever you get your podcasts. If you also get a chance, check out our newsletter, our Echo Essentials newsletter, where we get the beat and the updates from all of our podcasts and things happening around the city. Thank you so much for listening or watching. See you next time.